And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, we will call our budget meeting to order, and this is an exciting end to a long process. We started in February 7th with the strategic planning that culminates in the second public hearing and the budget adoption tonight. And so it is a long road, as Commissioner Madden included in her prayer, of preparation and of many, many hours of deliberation and consideration for the things that need to be done, certainly in this next fiscal year within budgeted means. And we are grateful to the city manager and your team for getting that done, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if you would like, why not make a presentation on this final budget hearing?
All right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and good evening, and good evening to the rest of the commissioners and to the public who is watching, and to our awesome team of department directors and other staff members that are attending tonight. Appreciate, as it was mentioned a moment ago, all of the hard work that has gone into the preparation for this fiscal year 2024 budget. And it has been a lot of hard work and a lot of fiscal management and a great job done by our staff. And so, Mr. Mayor, what I would like to do is, before I begin the presentation, which, you know, consistent with past years, is really just a summary, for the most part, of the lengthier presentation that we had at our first public hearing. But at that first public hearing, there were a few questions that staff needed time to research. And so I'd like to start off by providing the answers to those questions. And so if I could, I'd like to ask for Gina Jacoby, Assistant General Manager from Lakeland Electric, to come forward, and she's going to answer one of the questions, I believe, was asked by Commissioner Musick related to purchase power. And so if you would, Ms. Jacoby?
I am Gina Jacoby, Assistant General Manager of Fiscal Operations for Lakeland Electric. The question that Commissioner Musick asked at the last meeting was, he wanted to understand what the difference in costs were between purchased power, as well as if we produce the power. And in last fiscal year, our production costs, including fuel, were $56.82 per megawatt hour. Our purchased power costs were $66.25 per megawatt hour, so about a $10 difference between the two. Now, I do want to point out that it varies from year to year depending on when we take our units down, what the seasonality is doing, do we have a hot summer, a cold winter. So it can vary slightly, but the relationship should hold from year to year.
Thank you. Thank you. The other question was related to the pay study that has been ongoing throughout the year. That has been an awful lot of work, a lot of work done by our finance department and our human resources department. And there was a question about the results of that and how many employees would be receiving a market-based adjustment, you know, from the results of that study. And so for that, let me call on our Human Resources Director, Mr. Mark Farrington, and he has some information to answer that question.
Good evening, Mark Farrington, Director of Human Resources and Civil Services. In the first public hearing for the FY 2024 budget, one of the commissioners asked, what was the breakdown? How was it going to be a raid? So in the chart in front of you, you'll see the first column is the exempt employees or salaried employees, of which 472 were eligible to participate in this. 149 will be receiving a market adjustment, a little bit less than a third, 31.5%, 5.7%. We have one temporary exempt individual. That position wasn't below market and isn't going to be receiving any adjustment. In the non-exempt category, administrative clerical support, skilled craft group, 796 roles were eligible. 525 of them will be receiving adjustments, so roughly just a little bit less than 66%. And that's very pleasing because those are the people that you hear from day in, day out about, we can't keep up with the economy, and that's where the bulk of the money is going to. There are a number of temporary positions that are also impacted, positions that work less than 40 hours a week, but still are counted on by organizations such as Parks and Recreation, other organizations, R.P. Funding Center, that those individuals will also be receiving a market adjustment. So told out of 1,268 employees, 674, or 53%, will be receiving market adjustments. And then when we started working in the T grades, the skill grades, when we converted them to the new grades, we've had a number of positions that were between steps. And so we didn't want to have 240 one-offs. City manager said, what's it going to cost us? Let's adjust those people and get them on steps, then they can be managed in the normal process as the other adjustments are managed through the merit system versus always being a one-off. This is the distribution of the merit market adjustments subject to your approval of the budget.
Any questions?
I would like to just, you know, point out that related to the comments Mr. Farrington just made when we talk about those steps, I know the commission's aware, you know, for many years, we've heard our general employees, you know, requesting that we reduce the number of steps down from the 19-step system. That's just an awful long time, I mean, basically a 20-year career to get from the minimum of a pay range to the maximum. And so, you know, what the pay study results in is a reduction from 19 steps down to 15. And we've done, you know, similar reductions in our collective bargaining agreements with our collective bargaining members throughout the organization. And so this reduction down from the 19 to the 15 results in what Mr. Farrington was referring to, where, you know, if someone was already on a step, but then we condensed from 19 to 15, it then moved them and left them in between steps. And so then adjusting them to that next highest step will provide for that step system other than just having a kind of a range system where people are just anywhere throughout and provides that consistency. So if there are no other questions, we will move on into the presentation.
Thank you. I think that's very illuminating, and it's nice to be able to see that. Thank you for pulling that together for us.
Thank you, Mark. So as I mentioned a moment ago, and as has been customary now for several years, we'll go through our proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. Again, this is a summary. This summarizes all of the information that we have discussed and provided for quite some time now. And talking about, you know, the quite some time, you know, we started this process back in February with a two-day city commission strategic planning retreat. And then we're going to talk later in the presentation about, you know, the amount of spend or expenses that are programmed into the budget that are related to the strategic planning target areas that were determined by the city commission. And then in July, in late July, we had our city commission budget workshop and had an awful lot of information provided there, received feedback from the commission, and had an opportunity to talk about what some of the commission priorities outside of the strategic planning areas were. And we'll cover that again later in the presentation. A few weeks ago, on September the 7th, we had our first required budget public hearing, and that gets us to tonight, which is our second and final public budget adoption hearing. I'll cover the assumptions that are presently proposed and are programmed into the proposed budget. And so to start that discussion, we'll talk about our property value growth. And so we have budgeted for fiscal year 2024 the results that we have received from the property appraiser's office, which is a 12.15% growth in property value. Now then, to project out for the next two years, for fiscal years '25 and '26, we have estimated property value growth, and the estimations have been set at this time at 5% for each of those two future years. What the proposed budget does maintain, the general fund reserves at a minimum of 45 to 60 days cash on hand through fiscal year 2026. What is presently programmed in would include the adoption of the proposed millage rate of 5.4323 mills, and that is the same millage rate as our previous two budgets. Also programmed into the budget, we referenced this a few moments ago when we talk about our pay study and the results of that, there's several parts of the pay adjustments that are programmed in. First of all, there's an across-the-board salary adjustment, and now this is for and applies to general employees. As you know, again, the collective bargaining groups all are subject to the provisions that are in their collective bargaining agreements. But for the general employees across the city, it's programmed in that there would be a 3% across-the-board salary adjustment. In terms of merit increases for eligible employees on the dates that each of them individually become eligible, this is a change in the past from the past, and this is related to a lot of the work that was done by the consultant, Bolton. And what is proposed is that merit increases would either be 2.5% or 3%. And the way that works is, if you're in the pay steps that we talked about, if you're in the first or bottom half of those steps, there would be a 3% adjustment for those employees. That's to provide a greater increment of pay increase. That's the area where we struggle the most in retention. And so providing those greater increments, we believe, will help with retention. And then for those employees, and that works the same for the employees that are in the pay ranges versus the steps. If they're in the bottom half or below the midpoint of their range, they would get the 3% as well. In the steps, and for those employees who are in the upper half of the step plans, they would then receive a 2.5%. Same with those in the upper half of their ranges. The 2.5% when you think about what has historically been provided in our previous pay structure, it's usually been a 2.5%. So it's no less than what was provided in those past pay systems. There's also programmed into the budget, a 7.5% increase in our health insurance rates. That's attributable to the past few years where we have unfortunately experienced more expenses than revenues in the health plan system that we have. And there's been approximately $5 million in losses over the last two years. And so the result of that then is an increase in the health insurance rates to provide for some of those revenues where we have experienced more loss than revenue. Also then, as we've already talked about, is the wage and benefits study implementation. And so the market adjustments that Mr. Farrington talked about a few moments ago, those are individualized by each employee. That's based on the consultant comparing our job descriptions and responsibilities to similar in the marketplace. And that is, you know, looking at industry standards and comparing us to 18 other similar public agencies to determine what those market ranges should be based on each job description, job classification. There's also a component of that that relates to years of service or experience in those particular jobs, and that is why each individual employee is different in the amount of market adjustment that they will be receiving. Mentioned a moment ago, the strategic planning process and the target areas that were determined by the commission about three to four years ago now. And so we went through these individually at the first public hearing, and rather than do that tonight, we certainly can go into some of those details. But as you see on the overhead there, those are the strategic plan target areas. And the total expenditure proposed and planned, already programmed in this proposed budget, it totals about a little over $9.8 million in those different target areas. When we take a look at expenditures for budget investments and additions, we've talked about this. We talked about this and provided examples again previously, not only at the first public hearing, but back at the budget workshop. Much of this expense is related to growth that we have experienced. And in addition to the services that have increased in cost because of growth, we also know that, you know, the city is not certainly immune from, you know, the increase in cost out in the marketplace. And so, you know, when you think about funding growth and the services related to that, but then also, you know, expenses for increased costs that we've talked about in fertilizers and chemicals and other expenses, that is a total of over $4.6 million that's been programmed into the budget. Then we get to the discussions that we had that are additional to the strategic planning areas that we discussed when we had our budget workshop. And we heard from the commission about the various different initiatives that the commission wanted to fund. And so you can see each of those initiatives here on this slide, which total $1.725 million. I would mention that the first one listed there, the Pope Museum of Art expansion, that the plan there and what the commission has discussed is $250,000 in this budget, 24 budget, and another $250,000 in the fiscal year 2025 budget. I'll now cover some of the pie charts that you're all familiar with and give some discussion about our budget totals. When you look at our 2024 budget revenue sources and looking across all funds, you will see the total revenues of $746,962,838. As you can see there, 7% of our entire budget is property tax revenue. Almost 70%, about $518 million of our budget is charges for services, of which about $400 million is attributable to Lakeland Electric. However, almost half of that $400 million is to cover the cost for fuel and purchased In terms of then budgeted expenses in the proposed budgets, again, by all accounts and attributable to all funds, you can see here where the total expenditures balance with the total revenues. Our two largest expenses annually are personnel and, again, fuel and purchased power. We don't typically see as much capital outlay where it's nearing $100,000, it's actually just exceeding, I'm sorry, $100 million. However, in the last few years, we have planned reinvestments in power generation, as you know, the rice engine projects and the like, and also in our water and wastewater planned projects, including things like the Western trunk line and other capital outlay programmed expenses for those purposes. Now we'll talk about our general fund revenues for fiscal year 2024, and you can see that the total revenues total $172,672,720. As you're aware, and we've talked about before, you know, most municipalities are much more reliant upon property tax revenues than we are here at the city of Lakeland. We're very fortunate to see dividend sources providing 26%, so just over a quarter of our general fund revenues are from those dividend sources. We also, you know, have presented and had past conversations about, you know, the very low utility and solid waste rates that we have while we reinvest back into those systems. When we look at general fund expenses, again, you can see that the total expenditure matches and balances with the total revenues. Approximately 50% of the general fund costs are related to public safety. And so another 23% go toward quality-of-life type expenses, primarily related to parks, recreation, and cultural arts, and also in our public works, different service areas. The prior slide showed us budgeting $55.2 million in property tax revenues. And then on this slide, when we're looking at expenses, and as we've talked about before, you can see that to provide the level of service from our police department alone to adequately provide for the citizens, we have an expense budgeted of $55.3 million. So the expense of the police department is greater than what the revenues are received from our property tax revenues. Looking at just kind of a historical perspective of the ad valorem millage rates, you can see the history there. You can note that we reduced the millage back in 2019. We reduced it again in 2022. And as I mentioned earlier, tonight's proposed budget is, for now, programmed with the same millage rate that we have had for the past two budgets. You'll now see the day's cash fund slide that we've all become so accustomed to and familiar with. Now I will say, this slide is static. However, we do have with us tonight Deidre Joseph, our Assistant Finance Director. And if need be, she is prepared and does have the spreadsheet to where we can make adjustments if the commission chooses to. As you may recall, at the last budget hearing, prior to fiscal year '23 budget adoptions, the municipalities received what we refer to as a true-up from the state of Florida. The day's cash file we provided during our last public budget hearing showed a forecasted ending balance of 78 days in fiscal year 2026. But as you can see, we're now showing 80 days. It is still the same, however, 15-day drop between each year, similar to that as we discussed at our last meeting, and that's something to certainly be concerned about. But the difference in the true-up, the same thing we saw in '23, has now resulted in two additional days' cash from what you saw at our first public hearing. And so commissioners, that gets us, you know, to the, really, the end of the presentation before, you know, we have discussions from the commission and we'll stand for any questions. And so, you know, as you're aware, it requires a supermajority vote of the city commission. That's what's required to adopt the 5.4323 millage that was tentatively approved on September 7th. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, this budget, if adopted and when adopted, will become effective on October 1st, 2023. So again, we'll stand for any discussions for the commissions and questions that staff may assist with.
Are there any questions with respect to that budget presentation? Seeing none, we are taking a look then at 1A, yes, from numeral 1, A1, which is voting on the millage rate, and that would be, the proposal would be to keep the millage rate as shown as it is. And before we do that, we'll have our city attorney read that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is proposed ordinance number 23-034, an ordinance relating to ad valorem taxation. Establishing the millage rate for the city of Lakeland, Florida for the fiscal year commissioned October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024, providing for the levy of ad valorem taxes, finding the millage rate is 8.58% greater than the rollback rate, providing an effective date and a couple of modifications to that ordinance to update it from the tentative ordinance that you approved two weeks ago to tonight. In section two, the word tentative needs to be deleted. In section four, the word, or in section five, the word tentatively needs to be deleted, and that is now section 200.0652D that this is adopted pursuant to in the filing, just to comply with the statute requirements. I just need to state that the proposed millage rate that you're considering adopting tonight, as the final rate actually, is 5.4323 mills. That represents an 8.58% increase over the rollback millage rate of 5.0030 mills.
Is there a motion to approve?
Should I move?
And a second? And a second from Commissioner McLeod. Discussion by commissioners or questions? And discussion or questions by members of the audience? Oops. Oh, I'm sorry. This is on millage. This is on millage.
They're going, I think they're going, I've mentioned in our previous meeting, I think public safety is paramount. And I would like to propose, if I have a second or question, that we move the $1 million of the general fund for affordable housing to the new fire station to be built.
Would we be doing that in this amendment?
No, the next ordinance is appropriation.
Yes, this is for the millage.
Where you allocate the different funds.
Sorry.
Sorry, I was trying. I tried. Any discussion by any members of the audience? Now, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes.
And now the appropriation ordinance, where you're adopting the actual different items, different items to go into different funds. Commissioner Reed. Proposed ordinance number 23-035, the ones relating to appropriations, provided for the appropriation of monies for the city of Lakeland, Florida for various purposes for the fiscal year commenced in October 1st, 2023, and ended in September 30th, 2024, providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve? Move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. Okay. Discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. There again, to restate my proposal, there again, to move the $1 million from affordable housing to our new fire station. Again, I think the northwest and northeast areas are paramount that we have additional safety out that way. And that's the only motion I would make.
So you'd like to amend the motion with that change?
Yes.
Is there a second to that amendment? Seeing none, that leaves us on that unamended. But thank you for your presentation. And we're going to get that fire station as well. Any other discussion or questions? Commissioner Madden?
Commissioner Reed, would you like to see if a million dollars could go into the fire station fund and not affect our day's cash? Would you like Deidre to do that?
Sure.
That was the question that I had. Add a million dollars in general for day's cash. So that'd be about a day and a half?
Two days.
Two days.
Roughly.
Three days.
Three days?
Three days.
By '26?
By '26, it drops to 54. It drops to 54? Yes.
It's 80 now, is that right? Take it down to 73, 77?
Is that to take it up a million every year or just this year?
It would just be this year. He's asking not for recurring.
For this, just this year?
I would go to staff and ask, do we need to be budgeting for that fire station based off of this budget?
That's, you know, that's hard to say at this point. You know, at the last public hearing, we had some discussion about that. We have a few options that we're working on very hard. And, you know, I'd suggested, and we have now, the city has ordered and received an appraisal on some property. That's one of the options. The property owner has also ordered an appraisal, and we're waiting on the results of that. I think there's, you know, other opportunities potentially to provide that funding as well. So, you know, it certainly doesn't hurt, but being mindful again of the drop in days' cash going out, you know, to 2026, it's really a decision for the commission to make.
So restated, we wouldn't, it would not prohibit us from moving forward on the fire station if it were not budgeted? If it is budgeted, it has a negative impact really from a rating standpoint with respect to the day's outstanding?
And in addition, you know, as the commission is aware, I mean, we certainly have strong, you know, ratings in terms of our borrowing ability. And so if we got to that point and needed to borrow to be able to accomplish, you know, putting Station 8 in the area that it needs to be located, you know, that's certainly an option as well.
Any other questions on that at all?
Thank you. And I think we built Station 7, that was about $7 million. Was that an exception because of being out near the airport and having to man that one in a different spot?
Let me call on Chief Riley or one of the assistant chiefs. I wasn't here in Lakeland at the time. Station 7 was constructed. Commissioner, I'm really not sure. Let me see if one of the chiefs can help with that. Let me see if one of the chiefs can help with that.
Again, I think from what I understand, we have money for the acquisition of the land, if my understanding, and this is just, hopefully, would reduce debt service potentially if we could build it a little bit sooner.
Good afternoon. Mike Williams, your Assistant Chief of Operations. I believe that number is pretty close. We'd have to go back and look at that, but that is an exceptional building that's, as you all know, houses both our aircraft firefighting rescue crew and equipment, as well as our suppression and rescue for the community. So very, very unique and would not be something that would be typical of a design we would be looking for, for a residential fire station in that northwest area.
Was that land free?
That predates me there in that, so I'm not sure. Call upon our friend at the airport.
Chris Hall, City Airport Director. Nothing's free, but we don't charge for it. So there is, it's on airport property. There's no lease agreement back. It's a joint, shared use facility. So that's how we get paid, is by we have them out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So, Commissioner Reed, let me ask a question. Is the goal, if the goal is to build it into the budget so that we would do it faster, I don't think we'll do it any faster.
Try.
Okay, I mean, we're going to do it as quickly as we can do it.
I understand.
So would you want to add that even still, if it weren't a switch?
I think our police chief, our fire chief said that it's, and of course, we had a lot of citizens here last time that were very in favor of it. And so I just want to accommodate them, and of course, I think the public safety is paramount. And I explore, our response time would be a lot quicker, et cetera. If in any way we could keep it in, I'd like to, but there again, I'm only one of seven, so.
Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Reed, for bringing this up. It's hard when you don't know the full financing picture. I'm not opposed to adding that as a line item. I do think it sends a signal to the neighborhood, to those who came, that this is a priority. But again, we don't know the specifics, so that is, it's hard to say, oh, yes, we should allocate a million, but I think the message behind that, I can support that.
Commissioner McCarthy.
And just to add on, the day's cash on hand is really hypothetical. So right now, we're finishing at, what, 100 and...
12, 15. 75%.
Yeah, we're finishing well over what we try to keep in our window. So, you know, that's something that can be adjusted even with future millage, not to kick the can down the road, but I wouldn't be opposed to adding that extra $1 million just to jumpstart it and help us as much as we can to start this. We know the process is going to be long because just of everything that's being built right now and that it's going to cost a lot of money. So $1 million, you know, set aside, I would be very approve, I would approve that.
So would you like to make an amendment, Commissioner Reed, so we give you the authorship?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and to, you know, Commissioner McLeod's point, you know, there's also always the opportunity to make an adjustment mid-year budget. And so that, because we don't really know what the full cost of that is going to be, we have, you know, allocated funding, you know, for those purposes, you know, hopefully, certainly by mid-year, we hope much sooner than that, we will have a better understanding of what that cost would be. So there is just the option for the commission to consider that that also can be addressed at mid-year.
And that likely would be more than the $1 million anyway, if we were doing it mid-year.
There, again, I just want to make sure it's not stuck in affordable housing, where we could have the option to bring something with it, we could, I'd just like to see it, let the general public know that we have very concern for their well-being in that northwest area.
I don't sense a resistance on part of the commission.
Well, that was, yeah, so, I mean, you're, there's two different things we're talking about. Are we talking about pulling the money away from the low-income housing, or are you talking about pulling it out of the general fund? Because that's two different things that we're talking about here.
I am not for taking it out of the general fund.
But the amendment to take it out of affordable housing didn't get a second.
I guess we're dead in the water then.
Oh, okay, because this was to take it out with the 54 days' cash in 2026.
As an addition to.
So you don't like that?
Yeah, I like that.
I would support, I would support doing the $1 million. It sounds like several of us are, so, I mean, we could vote on that amendment.
Why don't you restate the motion for me then?
Okay. So it would be this motion, City Attorney Davis, amending an additional $1 million to be allocated for a fire station.
Correct. Out of the...
Out of the, yes. Which would then reduce our fiscal year '26 to 54 days, is what Deidre said.
Second.
And a second. Discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Music.
So if we are able to purchase the land, that gets expedited, and we, I mean, because everybody up here is for this and we're for it as quick as we can, if the land is purchased, October 1, we close on this, where is the money coming from currently to take the next step in the process? Because if we don't have any, then that certainly changes my mind. Where would we pull that from for design and for implementation of permits and things of that nature?
Deidre, just to make sure that it's programmed in the right way, there was allocations from the workshop in the budget in addition to from ARPA funding.
All right. I'm looking, pulling it up now.
While you're looking, I don't think there is any concern on the finance director's part about our ability to be able to fund it going forward with a mid-year budget correction.
Not at all. Or the ability to even to borrow, if we were to get into that circumstance, we, again, can certainly do that as well.
So our goal, and we probably would have another mid-year budget correction anyway when we knew what that amount was, because it's going to be something probably greater than the $1 million. Deidre, what did you find?
Still looking.
Okay. Commissioner Music.
So, yeah, so to echo Commissioner McLeod, certainly to put money aside, to echo to everybody that this is serious, I think is important, but also so to me is day's cash on hand savings, because we do have the flexibility to go in at, I mean, because by the time we're done, that's, mid-year is going to be here anyway by the time that we're done, then we have a bigger, better picture to be able to make an assessment other than just the $1 million. That's where I would want to head, is I'd rather have the security of the day's cash on hand, knowing that it not only helps us from a, you know, borrowing standpoint, but also having the flexibility to, in the future, being able to add whatever we need, because we don't know. Right? We are just, we are just moving money from one account to another verbally, just to be able to have that money necessary where we know we're one-tenth of what that needs to be if it's a $1 million.
Excuse me. Currently, we have in fiscal year '23, $1.8 million budgeted for land purchase for Fire Station 8, and an additional $1 million is programmed out of the Public Improvement Fund in fiscal year '24 for land purchase. So we have a total of $2.8 million available.
It might be most prudent, and it also doesn't help to set a pattern of adding a $1 million in the 11th hour, which we can do. And the message being sent that we want that fire station is clear. We want the fire station, and there's nothing that's going to slow us down in the process. So I think if we're making, if we pass this amendment, we're making a statement that we are all in on making sure that we have enough money allocated for that purpose. Reality is, we'll trim it based on what our needs are going to be when that acquisition occurs, and then we'll have design and review the first year, and that'll probably all, that happens in '24. And so Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. The only point I was trying to make is I didn't want to, so we have 1.8 available right now, then another, and after October, we'll have another $1 million?
Yes, correct.
And there again, the only thing, I didn't want to have to borrow money. That was my only reason coming from here. That would actually give us $3.8 million if we went from the affordable housing, which obviously is not going to pass, but that was my reason for reduce debt service and have more available cash. We would have to borrow less.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, you know, on the ARPA funds, because, Deidre, I'm not sure if you included the ARPA. I believe we have another $1 million in the ARPA funds, so I think in totality, it's about $3.8, $4 million if you include ARPA.
Correct. The 2.8 is just strictly the Public Improvement Fund.
Got you. So, direction? Commissioner McLeod.
This is good discussion, and it's a good reminder of what we have budgeted for the new fire station. Commissioner Music, and I think your argument is you like to maintain the flexibility of the day's cash and be able to evaluate when we have the full picture if we want to make that budget amendment allocation. Do I understand that correctly? Yeah. I think that makes sense. I do like the idea of sending a message to the neighbors, the residents, that we hear their concern, and this is a priority for this commission, and I think that, I think that's in the budget, as I kind of think through that now. So I think we have it, and I guess I'm coming around to where you are. Commissioner Music.
And just, if I could echo off of that, where it's really going to matter is when
we get land. How we vote when we have land and we have some real numbers in front of us, that's going to be the legs under this that we need, so.
And will do.
I agree.
Commissioner Simmons.
I'm a strong advocate of the Station 8 fire, fire station, and, but I agree with what Commissioner Music said and Commissioner McLeod said, that if we can get it mid-year, I think that's fine, as long as we send a message that we are definitely in favor of the getting that Station 8 implemented, installed as soon as possible, let the public know that we're about that. I think that's fine. I kind of agree, I'm sad with them on that, that we do it mid-year as opposed to the amendment.
Any other comments by the commission on this? Any by the audience? Members of the audience? Okay, then we're going to take a amendment, roll call vote, and we'll start with Commissioner McLeod.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No?
No.
So noes have it for three. All right, now, let's go back to the two, number two, the proposed budget itself as is. Without an amendment in it, we already have a motion. Any other discussion on it, on any other points of question by the commission? Seeing none, any by any members of the audience? Hearing no stomach scrumpling? We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons.
I'm sorry.
On the budget, approving the budget.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Aye. So 6-1. That brings us into Item B1.
Okay, Item B1 is establishing the compensation for the city commission for the upcoming year. The charter provides for the commission getting the automatic across-the-board increase that the general employees get, and that happens automatically by virtue of the language of the charter. If the commission wants to go beyond that, then it would require actually opening up a public hearing and a separate vote to go above the, across the board increase. So the, what you have in your commission, in your package indicates that a salary for the mayor for FY '24, a $48,957, $48,957.87, that is above the current salary of $47,531.91. For the commissioners, FY '24 salary would be $32,638.59, and that exceeds the current salary of $31,607.95. Those increases, again, represent just the 3% across the board that the general employees get, and that would happen automatically by virtue of the language of the charter. So technically, no motion would be necessary for that to go into effect, or you can go ahead and vote on that, or if you wish to exceed that, then you would need to open up a public hearing on that.
Or no motion, and then, you know, you don't...
Move to approve. Let me get simple.
There's a motion to approve. And then a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by members of the audience? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Same unanimously passes. That brings us to Mayor and members of the city commission that want to share any items of interest? Seeing none, audience, are there any audience members that would like to share any views? Seeing none, then we are...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, sorry. I was trying to, I was trying to sneak in there. I just want to, I just want to think, sincerely think this commission from, from the employees here at the city of Lakeland, that are tremendous public servants, and we've talked about it, you know, with all of the growth that we've experienced without, you know, adding a bunch of headcount, you know, the work that's done to serve this community is in a big way on the backs of those employees. And so you've all been very supportive of the wage study and the wage adjustments here, and that's certainly going to help with the things that we've talked about throughout the year of needing to better retain, you know, employees and recruit where necessary, and make sure that we're paying at an appropriate, you know, market salary for that work. And I would tell you, and I would hope and feel confident, the commission and future commissions would support, we should not go as long having those market rate studies done now that we've put a new pay system in place and this initial one's been done. It should be much less costly. It should be much, much easier to do. And so, you know, really about every three years, that should be something that's looked at for the employees. But again, I just want to thank the commission, thank the employees for all of their hard work, but thank the commission for the support in this budget, for the pay for the public employees here at the, at the city of Lakeland.
And I affirm that, because I am so grateful this commission is so supportive of the staff that we have in the city, and to see them progress and to compliment them for the work that they perform and the quality of it by a commensurate pay level. And so from our standpoint, we want to continue that, and we want to make sure that we are hiring people that love doing, get to do what they want to do, thrive in what they're doing, and then pay them well for that. So thank you for making that study available and giving us that opportunity. Thank you. Any other comments? If there are none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
The wind wins. They're not watching. My daughter brought back. I should have had her bring it for the commission. That's what she should have done. She's not.